Order the regular meeting Thursday, October 24th, 2019. Invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Andrepon.
Thank you, Madam President. I will yield the invocation to Mr. Bream and I will lead the pledge.
Father God, we just love you. We thank you for this day. Thank you for all your many blessings that you laid upon each and every one of my lives, Father. We just ask tonight that you give us wisdom and discernment over the decisions we make, Father, and that the decisions we make tonight please you. We ask all this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a little reminder, ask you to silence. Please silence all cell phones. And if you need to speak on an item on the agenda, fill out a blue slip and bring it up to the front to Ms. Jessica. Roll call, Ms. Kathy.
Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew.
Here.
Mr. Behrs.
Here.
Mr. Bream.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Farnum.
Here.
Mr. Guidry.
Mr. Guillory.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Vice President McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Senegal.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
President Mayo.
Here.
Would you have a call?
Thank you. We'll come back to number four, hold a public hearing at six o'clock. Number five, presentation of a certificate of recognition to Ms. Julian Elliott in honor and recognition of being crowned Ms. Teen America. Mr. McMillan.
Vice President, please join us. Don't you love it when we have royalty in the House?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm thrilled listening to that.
Just a small example of the beautiful women we have in Westlake. She's one of them. We're thrilled. She's got a national honor. Before I give her her plaque, I'm gonna just ask her a few questions so we can learn a little bit about her journey and her adventure onto this title. And then if any jurors has any questions, we'll also turn to you. Julian Elliott, who is named Miss, let me get it right, Miss Teen America, right here is our guest today. Julian, come on up to the mic. Let's talk about how did you get to winning this title? What did it take to get there?
So, at Miss Teen America, a lot of people don't realize this about pageants, but we get there a whole week before the actual competitions start. So, it's a week of traveling, meeting new people. We went to SeaWorld. We just did all kinds of things, signed autographs. But to actually compete, we competed in interview, onstage question, evening gown, fun fashion and activewear. So, there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of different areas of competition, so it's a lot of fun, yeah.
So, not just beauty, she also has brains. What was the question they asked you at the pageant?
So, they asked me, what is your personal platform? Each girl is required to have an issue of concern, something that they care about, something that they'd advocate as or for as Miss Teen America. And my personal issue of concern is the gift of literacy. I've met a lot of teens, a lot of kids, mostly teens, that don't like to read. They think it's something that is more of an academic chore rather than a creative outlet. And my job as Miss Teen America is to change that stigma and make them understand that reading is fun, writing is fun, it's something that you can use to, you know, express yourself. And that's my role.
Any jurors, any questions from any jurors?
That is awesome. I was actually, I heard a fact, something yesterday, they were talking about the amount or the lack of reading, like after people get out of high school and then even college, the fact that just no one picks up a book anymore. And that's awesome. That's a great choice.
Thank you. Well, I always tell people too, it doesn't matter what you read, it could be a comic book, it can be the newspaper, it can even be social media, as long as you're challenging your brain and constantly reading something, that helps with so many different things in life.
Mr. Andrepon.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. You are obviously a very smart girl.
Thank you.
Number one. You speak very well and you address yourself very well to a crowd, and I got to applaud you for that because not too many could do what you're doing. And congratulations.
Anyone else? Let me get my glasses out so I can read some of these things. By the way, Westlake High School changed their football game to Thursday night, and she serves as captain of the cheer squad. So, when she leaves here, she's gonna be running, putting on her cheerleader uniform and heading over to the game where she'll take care of that. She's also the president of the MYAC, and she is a member of many clubs, Beta Club, Student Council, of course, Literary Club and FBLA. On July 20th, she was crowned Miss Teen America 2019 in San Antonio, Texas, where there were five area competitions, interviews, gowns, onstage questions, athletic wear and fashion runway. During her reign, she will travel nationally and internationally, promote the issues of concern that she has, the gift of literacy, and be a role model for younger girls. With that being said, one more time, I give you Miss Teen American, Julian Elliott. To the recognition where Kansas County Parish Police Bureau on this day, the 24th day of October, Julian Elliott, in honor of recognition being crowned Miss Teen America, congratulations. We're gonna take some pictures with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You wanna say a few more words?
No, I think we covered it all.
I wanna say one thing before you can take the picture.
Ms. Trimmie.
I'm all in to cheerleaders. I do have a granddaughter at Quincy High School that is a cheerleader. So, I go to game to watch the cheerleaders, not the game.
It's a lot of people.
I watch the game, but I'm going for the cheerleaders. So, letting you know I'm for the cheerleaders.
And one more thing, after, you gotta have great parental support. Her parents are here, Jason and Jackie Elliott. Let's give them a hand also. They do a great job.
Just happen to be playing football.
It won't work. So, she gives me, no, it's broken, so she gives me this. It's broken, so she gives me this.
By the way, go random.
Number six, presentation of awards for the 2020 Road and Drainage Trust Fund Program with the City of Dequincy. Meet me down in front.
And Ms. Trimmie?
Yeah, I'm coming. I'm coming.
Next one up will be the City of Sulphur. If you can come down and take pictures.
They might smile, man.
I know that man.
Dinner is mine.
They got enough.
Next up will be the City of Westlake.
City of Westlake.
Earlier we had the beauty, now we have...
The beast.
I'll say it if you want to.
I'll say it.
Okay, y'all, are you ready?
Come on, Francis.
You gotta go back down.
Yeah.
Have the drainage.
Gravity drainage, five and more than four.
Calvinson.
That's Mr. Tony.
Took me a while, but he's...
Good, how are you?
Nope.
That must be Sulphur.
It's worth more Sulphur.
Four, Sulphur.
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 That's Sulphur.
Nope, Sulphur good.
Yeah.
All of them know my name.
Sorry.
Good job.
This is a town of my own right.
Yeah, come on.
I'm bad, I'm a crooked nose.
I'm trying to be cannibalistic.
And now the town event.
That's mine.
Congratulations.
Hey Kenny, smile, okay? Smile. Suck it in and smile.
You're welcome.
Hey, it's a chill.
Not our mission.
Thank y'all.
Number seven, appearance by Ms. Colleen Benoit, artistic director for the Lake Area Ballet Theater.
Hi, everybody. I'm Colleen Cannon Benoit. I'm the artistic director for the Lake Area Ballet Theater. And first and foremost, I want to thank you all for generously picking our nonprofit for the grants each year. We were able to use the monies that, with the grant money, to provide for the costumes for these kids. Just to let you know, these costumes cost anywhere from $400 to $600 a piece because they're handmade. So, every costume that we use in our local production is all professional, they all wear professional costumes. The other thing I want you to notice is these are all children, not children, they're young adults. I was gonna say children, but they're young adults. They're high school kids, they're college kids. And the reason I formed this nonprofit for the Lake Area is to allow these kids the opportunity to perform in a professionally done production in their own hometown in front of local audiences to appreciate. So, these kids are at the studio four to five, six days a week on top of their regular studies. Many of them are already enrolled in college as a high school student, AP student, some, our cavalier over there is an archer, he competes in archery. We have Bluebells, we have Sweethearts, we have track members, we have, she's actually in college online in San Francisco, living here, she's our Sugarplum. So, each of these kids have their own regular Lake Charles kid, but they're performing for you in the Lake Area. So, I'm here just to tell you thank you, and I hope that you get a chance to come see the show. It's November 21st and 22nd. We have school shows at nine o'clock, and the 23rd, we have two shows, public shows, two o'clock and seven o'clock. I'm gonna say something. And Mr. Brian Abshar has actually graced the stage with us as a parlor dad. He was a dad. He had to wear a tuxedo and it was, he was fantastic. So, I'm sure he'll be in the audience supporting us again this year. So, we appreciate everybody's support for this production.
Is it at the Civic Center?
Yes, ma'am, it's at the Civic Center. And we do it every year. So, we make sure that we provide this holiday tradition for all of the kids, all of the people in Lake Charles every year. It's about 150 people in it. Everything is voluntary, parents help backstage, it's all voluntary. So, I just wanted to thank you all.
Hold on one second, we have some jurors that wanna say something. Mr. Abshar?
I've had the privilege of working with you as you ratted me out.
Sorry.
But it is a very professional, very well-run machine. It's amazing to see the volunteers in the back stitching clothes, fixing buttons, you know, helping girls put on makeup and costumes, and it's, it can be wild. But you run a great operation and you're very deserving.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am very honored, honored.
Anyone else?
Hey, thank you. And the arts are so important, and it's really sometimes overlooked how important it is. And for you to do this, to volunteer, to work like you do, to bring the arts to our community is tremendous. And a lot of people, maybe they don't play football or basketball or some sport like this, but they can be involved in the arts. And like you were saying, they're multi-talented, they're in some of the dance lines and things like this. But to have that other opportunity is tremendous for Kansas County Parish, and we really, truly thank you for what you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're not dancing? I'm sorry.
Number eight, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Madam President, we have 43 applications before you tonight and recommend that they be approved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Andrepon and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number nine.
Move on nine.
Consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advice regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 10, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September 19th, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Andrepon and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 11. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following road abandonment application, 1242 Callock Road in Ward 6. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 12, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 130 Gross Road in Ward 4. Rezone from mixed residential O2 to heavy industrial I2 to allow heavy industrial development. The Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with the following conditions. I have a motion by Mr. Behrs and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 14, receive report from staff regarding proposed small cell wireless facilities ordinances.
You can receive report.
Back to Ms. Gal.
Thank you, Madam President. We were here tonight because on Tuesday night, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended that the police jury now approve the, what we're calling the Small Cell Wireless Facilities ordinances. We do have a PowerPoint, we can start that PowerPoint if we can. We've only got four or five slides, I believe, and we'll take you through it. But the small cell wireless facilities, the reason we're here now doing this is that small cell wireless facilities or antennas allow 5G networks to thrive. Their 5G requires it. And what 5G is, it's a fifth generation cellular wireless. And trying to figure what that is, 1G was the earlier, the earliest cell phones, 2G added text messages, 3G added browsing apps, 4G are the phones we have, smartphones we have today, and 5G is the wave of the future. I'm not really technologically savvy, so I don't really know what that might be, but what you hear from 5G is self-driving cars, autonomous vehicles, things that will make our lives so much easier for local governments might be traffic improvements that the technology will allow traffic patterns to improve dramatically. Surgery is being done by doctors in other cities through computers, a doctor in New York performing surgery on somebody in Lake Charles. That kind of technology is what they're saying. So, why are we here though passing ordinances in Kansas County Parish? Because we're trying to be ahead of the game that 5G eventually will come to southwest Louisiana. The FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, earlier this year said that if, that 5G is so vital that they've limited local governments' abilities on what they can do to regulate this technology. So, but they did allow local governments, parishes, counties, cities to come up with some limitations on, and what we're coming to you now with is a framework that is allowed by FCC to set up a permitting process that will give us at least some say on where these providers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, can place their antennas and facilities inside of the parish's right-ofways. So, we're only introducing them tonight. We'll have, I think the ordinances have actually been on the website for quite some time now, and we'll try to, we'll open it for public comment and hopefully take action on November 7th. So, the slideshow, I guess we don't have it, but it's had different kinds of examples of what these things might look like. The ordinances again are trying to dictate as best we can, under the guidelines the FCC has placed upon us, where these antennas can be placed inside the right-ofway. In the ordinances, we try to encourage that they be placed on existing poles and other things like that. So, again, the ordinances will be posted on the website, open for public comment, and we'll hopefully take action at your next meeting. Okay, there it is. So, if they keep going, one of the next slides will show you kind of the examples of what these things look like. We call them facilities, they're really antennas. They're much smaller, but they're, but 5G requires so many of them that in previous generations of wireless, antennas would be miles apart. These things have to be hundreds of feet apart. So, there are a lot of them. And again, these ordinances give us a say on as best we can, some limitations and permitting processes for placement of these facilities in the parish right-ofways. So, there's our timeline. We're here again on October 24th, introducing it to you and to the public, and hopefully we'll take action on November 7th. I am here to answer any questions anyone might have. And again, Wes is, and his department has been instrumental in placing these ordinances together.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, when you had the big towers that we have now, I know some communities would force those companies to use the same tower, and I think that they could, but then sometimes they chose to and sometimes they didn't. Can we do that with these? Because, you know, that doesn't look that intrusive until you've got 5,000 of those things all over the place, when maybe we could get by with 2,000 if they were sharing. I don't know if that's possible, because I don't know that much about the technology.
Well, and I don't either, but the, what I do know is the technology, this does require antennas to be placed much closer than that. Our limitations, our ordinances are, we'll do the best we can to make sure they're using existing structures already, but I don't think the technology is gonna, it's gonna require some standalone facilities, I'm sure.
Won't allow them to share the same antenna, as far as you know, two different companies? That's my question.
Oh, no, no. That's fine, you can take a chance.
Mr. Crane.
There could be some opportunity for shared space on one pole. It's not gonna be a mandatory requirement, though.
We can't do that.
I don't think so.
Would you find out to where you say, instead of, I don't think, it's either yes, we can or no, we can't?
When this comes, and we don't know when it will be, but we anticipate that Verizon or these carriers will come to the police jury and with their map, with their proposed sites. Again, we will do the best we can to dictate where they might be able to move those things, but their technology is gonna require a certain pattern, and unfortunately, under the FCC guidelines, there's only so much we can do. Now, the ordinances we have are the best we can do, and without the ordinance, we would have no say at all. So, that's why we're coming to you now, to try to stay ahead of the game, that when they do come, we'll have at least some guidelines in place.
So, I still don't have my question answered, and I don't expect you to answer now. Could y'all find out, and also, you can reach out to a large city, because I'm sure in New York, or, in fact, I forgot, I was somewhere not that long, maybe in Denver, and they had 5G there already. So, somebody's already run into this, and could we reach out to them to maybe just get a little bit of advice? Just, and I applaud y'all for doing this ahead of time and all, but just see if you can answer my question, and could that be done? Yes, we can, we can get that answered. And I do wanna applaud Sam, because Sam, we put this in Sam's lap, because it, under the FCC requirements, it was a very tight thing, and there was a lot of legalese and things that had to be done, and Sam put this together, and we appreciate it. But we will, this ordinance will be in Chapter 26, under zoning and land use, and we'll be permitting it under our, under the Division of Planning and Development, too. So, we've been working very close to get this done, but yes, we can answer.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Farnum.
Thank you, Madam President. This really appears to be in a below-ground utility area where there's no above-ground utilities. I guess in the utility world we live in here, in most places, it's all above ground. So, existing structures could, will they be forced to use those existing structures? Or?
No, they will not be forced, but there are opportunities for them to do that. And of course, they'll have to get with the utility companies to get agreements for them to place those on their facilities, but...
Could be, come down to a rent situation or something like that. The other question is, how much coordination's been done with the city and the state on this? Obviously, we're only responsible for the unincorporated area. How does this, how does this drill into the cities and on the state routes?
I have been in discussions with the city, and they have a version of this that was passed, I believe, a month or so ago. I've been in contact with the city attorney for Lake Charles.
How about Sulphur and Benton and Starks and Quincy and Iowa?
I've not reached out to them, I don't know what they've done, but I will do so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Scott.
Just two questions. So, Lafayette, we know they're heavy into the internet, and so maybe reach out to them if they're already doing it. I'm sure 5G will get to Lafayette before it gets to us, just because of the infrastructure that parish has put in to bring in internet companies. So, maybe look towards Lafayette, see if they have anything to offer. Second thing is, as I look at these pictures, and this is merely a statement, I like the clean, plain antenna poles without, because once you start bulking everything up on the lights and all that, that's when it gets a little, you know, in my own personal opinion, that's when everything gets a little raunchy compared to just those clean poles with their antenna on it. Could we, if we decided to, say you had to use that pole that clean, and that would be the, just a question.
Our hands are really tied, because the technology does require so many of these facilities or antennas. The uproar that you've seen, though, in other cities is when carriers like Verizon have come into the city and there are no restrictions, and somebody wakes up one morning, then there's an antenna in front of their home. So, that's what we're trying to avoid. We're gonna do the best we can, but unfortunately, there's only so much we can do. And these things really are geared a lot more toward the cities. So, I don't know what they're gonna be... I don't think so.
Would you find out to where you say, instead of, I don't think, it's either yes, we can or no, we can't?
When this, when this comes, and we don't know when it will be, but we anticipate that Verizon or these carriers will come to the police jury and with their map, with their proposed sites. Again, we will do the best we can to dictate where they might be able to move those things, but their technology is going to require a certain pattern, and unfortunately, under the FCC guidelines, there's only so much we can do. Now, the ordinances we have are the best we can do, and without the ordinance, we would have no say at all. So, that's why we're coming to you now, to try to stay ahead of the game, that when they do come, we'll have at least some, some guidelines in place.
So, I still don't have my question answered, and I don't expect you to answer now. Could y'all find out, and also, you can reach out to a large city, because I'm sure in New York, or, in fact, I forgot, I was somewhere not that long, maybe in Denver, and they had 5G there already. So, somebody's already run into this, and could we reach out to them to maybe just get a little bit of advice? Just, and I applaud y'all for doing this ahead of time and all, but just see if you can answer my question, and could that be done?
Yes, we can, we can get that answered. And I, I do want to applaud Sam, because Sam, we, we put this in Sam's lap, because it, under the FCC requirements, it was a very tight thing, and there was a lot of legalese and things that had to be done, and Sam put this together, and we appreciate it. But we will, this ordinance will be in Chapter 26, under zoning and land use, and we'll be permitting it under our, under the Division of Planning and Development, too. So, we've been working very close to get this done, but yes, we can answer.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Foren.
Thank you, Madam President. This, this really appears to be in a below-ground utility area where there's no above-ground utilities. I guess in the, in the utility world we live in here, in most places, it's all above-ground. So, existing structures could, will they be forced to use those existing structures, or?
No, they will not be forced, but there, there are opportunities for them to do that. And of course, they'll have to get with the utility companies to get agreements for them to place those on their facilities, but.
Could be, come down to a rent situation or something like that. The other question is, how much coordination's been done with the city and the state on this? Obviously, we're only responsible for the unincorporated area. How does this, how does this drill into the cities and on the state routes?
I have been in discussions with the city, and they have a version of, of this that was passed, I believe, a month or so ago. I've been in contact with the city attorney for Lake Charles.
How about Solfer and Vinton and Starks and Point C and Iowa?
I've not reached out to them, I don't know what they've done, but I will do so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Scott.
So, just two questions. So Lafayette, we know they're heavy into the internet, and so maybe reach out to them if they're already doing it. I'm sure 5G will get to Lafayette before it gets to us, just because of the infrastructure that parish has put in to bring in internet companies. So, maybe look towards Lafayette, see if they have anything to offer. Second thing is, as I look at these pictures, and this is merely a statement, I like the clean, plain antenna poles without, because once you start bulking everything up on the lights and all that, that's when it gets a little, you know, in my own personal opinion, that's when everything gets a little raunchy compared to just those clean poles with their antenna on it. Could we, if we decided to, say you had to use that pole that clean, and that would be the, just a question.
We, our hands are really tied, because the technology does require so many of these facilities or antennas. The uproar that you've seen, though, in other cities is when carriers like Verizon have come into the city and there are no restrictions, and somebody wakes up one morning, then there's an antenna in their, in front of their home. So, that's what we're trying to avoid. We're going to do the best we can, but unfortunately, there's, there's only so much we can do. And, and these things really are geared a lot more toward the, the cities. So, I don't know what they're going to be doing inside, in the unincorporated areas. But you, you have our assurances, we're doing the best we can to try to make sure they're using existing facilities and not being obtrusive to, to residential or anything else.
So hypothetically, if we were, if they were to approach you and say, hey, you need one of these in the Preon Lake Park, are you going to hang those things all over the poles out there, or would you rather have a nice, clean pole on its own? Just hypothetically.
Well, it's going to have your right, it's going to have your rights away, and so, it would be probably, hopefully, more so on the outskirts of any type of park. But again, their, their plans, and when they come to us for their permits, that's when we'll have to address those things.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have a motion to receive report by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Bears. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 15.
Number 15.
Consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment for the parish Gusta, Ike, CDBG, Discovery Recovery, to increase the parish's allocation with funds from the completed City of Lake Charles housing program. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. It's six o'clock, so we're going back to four. Hold a public hearing at six o'clock PM. Code of ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, everybody. The first one on the agenda tonight, A is 221 Chili Wesley Road, this is in the Carless area. This is one house, one accessory building. The owner of record is Jennifer W. Huffpower et al., and we recommend that both of these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of these properties? Name and address for the record, please.
I know the old house looks rough.
Excuse me, excuse me, need a name and address for the record, please.
Ma'am?
Your name and address.
Oh. Herman Wesley, 221 Chili Wesley Road and Hagberry Highway. I know, I'm not real fast on doing, trying to fix the old house up, it's taking me a The front steps, when you went up to it, it looked real bad, it was messed up. So, I had to rebuild that. I tore it all out and I rebuilt it. And I got a bad back, and then it's been rough. I've been using the, the old house as a storage building, and, but at the inside, ain't going to be lived in. It's just, it's a storage building, that's all it is. And it doesn't leak in the old house, the old house has a rubber roof on it, and it's got solid floors. I know it looks kind of junky, but that's the way it is. Eventually, it slowly gets cleaned up, but the old house isn't hurting anybody around there. All the people, all my neighbors over there, they, they said, we're not worried about your house, we were just worried about you. I said, I said, I didn't know I was going to get put through this, you know? And they're not happy about it.
Bears. Mr. Bears.
Okay.
I need a motion and a second to discuss.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
Again.
Motion by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Foren. Yes, Mr. Bears.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Robinson, can you tell me, walk me through how this, how we came to this date, or to this, how we got to this point? Who were you called by? Were you called by?
David Robinson.
No, no, I'm going to, I'm going to have Mr. Robinson walk me through who called him and all that.
Yeah, Mr. Crane's the one that turned this over to me, and then I went out to look at the property.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure if we actually had a call on it, but we were, you know, we've worked several violations in this particular area, and the home is obviously noticeable from the public right-ofway. And so, it's in, it's in pretty bad shape. And so, it's, it's definitely a condemnable structure. So, I, I, I mean, we recommend that it be condemned and removed.
I don't think so.
Okay, one second. How, if he would like to continue using it as a storage building, I mean, what, what, to what extent would he need to, I guess, repair?
It's really not designed for a storage building. I mean, that's not what it was originally designed for, it's a residence. And so, under the code, I mean, it's, that's what it is, and that's how we view it. And so, it's, under the, the ordinance, it basically, for condemning of structures, I mean, this, this fits that, what it is. And I, again, I don't think it's, the structure itself, I mean, it is, it's got a lot of rot.
It's a solid structure.
Okay.
But it's got a lot of rot, it's been vacant for quite some time, and it's, it's really not feasible to, to really repair it.
Well, it's not, like I said, it's not for to live in, nobody's ever going to live in it, and it's good for a storage room, storage, all the stuff that I do have in there, it looks kind of junky, but it's mine. And if you, you can walk all the way through the, all through the house, and you're not going to fall down and bust your face.
I, I would, I would say, if, if, if we move over this, can we just do the best we can to work with him on a timeframe? Yes, sir.
There are multiple owners on this property, they have done a secession, so this gentleman here is not a minor, is not a majority owner.
Thank you.
Well, my two sisters, they're in on this, too, and my brother, and me. Now, if you're talking about a majority rules, we got it, you know?
Mr. Bears, do you want to make a motion on this?
Trying to think what my, I mean, what.
How about your?
Go ahead, Mr. Foren.
How about we make a motion to defer this for 30 days, so we can talk about this more?
I'll make a motion that we do that, defer it for 30 days, and.
I'll second that.
Let's see if we can get all the family members together, make sure we're all on the same page. You know, because I'm, I haven't, I haven't heard from the other family members, so that to me says something, but if there's, if there's a way that, you know, we can work through this and everybody's happy, then, you know, I'd like to take a shot at that.
I agree.
So, I'm going to ask you and your family members to get with Mr. Robinson, okay? And, and try to, try to work this out. You know, I don't, that, that little shed, I don't think that thing looked worth anything. I understand it's yours, but let's, let's see what y'all can do, get together, get with Jennifer and them, and, and talk with Mr. Robinson, his department, and let's see what we can do. But it's going to have to be cleaned up substantially.
Yeah. I agree.
My name is Teddy Wesley, I'm the sister, and I wanted to find out about the complaint against the house, and what we could do to resolve it, and we'd like to have some time to redo that, so we don't want to lose the house. And I would like for him to stay next to me, because I'm 84 years old and I don't have any children, and I need somebody there with me, and I would like him to stay.
Where does he live? You live right next to that, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, but if he tears that house down, I mean, he can, he can still stay. Yeah. Main thing is, is it is, it is a nuisance by, by ordinance, and we, we kind of got to go by that, okay? So, let's see what we can do. You guys get together with Mr. Robinson, Mr. Robinson, we're going to defer this for 30 days. So, we've got to make some progress or make some decisions in 30 days, okay?
We have a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Foren. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, our next structure on the agenda tonight is B 3493 M OJ Road, this is in the South Lake Charles area. We have two accessory buildings on this property, and we recommend both of these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Do we have anyone here to speak on this item?
Move to condemn.
We have a motion to condemn by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
C is 2509 North Flounder Drive, this is in the South Lake Charles area. We have one manufactured home and one accessory building. The owner of record is Kellyanne Beldon Stall, and we recommend both of these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Move to condemn.
I have a motion to condemn by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Landry. Anybody here to speak on this item? Anyone here to speak on this item? Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
D, this is 212 Pretium Road, this is in the South Lake Charles area. It's one house.
Move to condemn.
And one accessory building. The owner of record is Sidney Van Dyke, we recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Anyone here to speak on that item? I have a motion by Mr. Scott, second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
E, 130 Scales Road, this is in the Starks area. We have one manufactured home, the owner is Roger G. Burgess, recommend this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
Come on.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Truman and a second by Mr. Landry. A motion to condemn. Anyone here to speak on this item? Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
We're going to go to F 1906 Woodell Lane, this is in the West Lake area. We have two manufactured homes, the owner is a George M. McGee et al., we recommend that both of these structures be condemned and removed in 30 days.
I have a motion to condemn by Mr. McMillan, second by Mr. Landry. Anyone here to speak on this item? No one here? Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
G 325 Carpenter Lane, East Lake Charles area, it's one house, one accessory building. The owner is Darryl Charles and Cassandra Lewis, and we are, we were recommending it be condemned, we do have a speaker on this one.
Make a motion to defer for 60 days.
Hold on. Go ahead and ask.
Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
Actually, this was deferred from 30 days ago.
I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. McMillan. Mr. Crane.
Okay, sorry. This was deferred 30 days, from 30 days ago. Actually, the request by the jury was for us, for my staff, or one of my staff members to go out and meet with the gentleman, Mr. Lewis, who owned the structure. And that was done, Mr. Thibodeau, our chief building official, went out and met with him, and actually did a complete walkthrough and basically identified what needed to be repaired for this structure. And so, we're, we're in agreement now that he is able to repair that structure, and the ordinance allows for the jury to give 60 days for the gentleman to repair. And you can ask him to come up, and I think he's actually been to our office today, and we're, we're, we're in a position now, I think, that we can issue a permit for him to, to repair this structure.
Who did you?
Let's, let's go, let's proceed with the motion to defer for 60 days, that'd be great.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Mr. Collins to defer for 60 days and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Okay, we're down to the last one, H 1305 Laverne Road, this is in the Moss Bluff area. We have one house and two accessory buildings, the owner is Genevieve Ladet Gilery et al. We will recommend that these structures be condemned and removed.
I make a motion to defer it for another 30 days.
And this, this, we, we do have a speaker on this one.
We have a motion by Mr. Collins.
Second.
And a second by Mr. McMillan to defer for 30 days. We do have someone to speak on this.
Defer for 30 days, I caught a discussion also.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Maurice Tyens, my office address is 4839 Isles Road. I'm here representing Michael Gilery, but at the same time, sort of ex post facto, representing Genevieve Ladet Gilery, she's actually represented by a local attorney named Leslie Knox. This is co-owned by a brother and sister, and they have been involved in a succession difficulty for quite some time. They finally resolved their issues, and Ms. Knox and I spoke yet again this afternoon, and resolved between the two of us, because we know the property is, is in a critical situation, to work extremely hard and put everything in, in priority shape to get their agreement decided, to compromise so that Mr. Gilery will become 100% owner. The delay not to string this out was because of taxation difficulties as well, that is, federal taxation difficulties, as well as making sure that we structured this change of ownership to him, so that we didn't create a real estate title defect of some sort. So, both attorneys have been, been careful to try to get this done the way it should be legally. And so, we're in position now, and we've resolved between the two of us to get the necessary paperwork signed between our clients this coming week. They both do reside in Houston, but we certainly know how to be in touch. Once Mr. Gilery becomes 100% owner, his plan is to immediately list the property for sale with a Realtor that knows all he can find out about in the Moss Bluff area, and then get a recommendation on whether or not it should be actually torn down completely and have the property sell as, as naked land, or whether there should be something done to try to upgrade it. That's not the picture, by the way, I don't think. And so, the idea would be to, to get something done with a view to the fact that this is in commercial land up in Moss Bluff. It's a residence and been a residence for years and years and years, like most of that neighborhood, but you see 171 is sitting there across the backyard. So, it's kind of that in-between situation where you have a residence that's in commercial property zoning-wise, and so, it's going to be a little bit critical to list and get it sold and get it figured out. But in the meantime, Mr. Ladet has spent.
And, and, Madam President, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But I, but I think with, if you have no objection. But I, but I think with, if you have no objection to the 30-day deferral, if that helps for you, I think we can probably move on and take action.
Yeah, I didn't, like, like I said, I wasn't trying to string this out.
No, no, no.
I'm just about done.
No, certainly. But, but now, if you're in favor of the 30 days on deferral, we probably take action now.
I can't promise that it'll be fixed in 30 days. I don't mean to say that. But it'll be in position so we can move forward and, and I'll do dispatch. I'll put it that way.
I have a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
And congratulations from the recent elections to whoever that applies to.
Number 16. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a contract between the police jury and R.E. Height Construction Company, LLC, for the J. Bennett Johnson Avenue project in War III. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Foren. Any discussion? Mr. Gilery.
Is this project 100% state and federal funded? Because I know it's by, I know it's by Sewell.
It's an 80/20 match where locals have to put up 20% match. And that's going to be split between Chenault, the City of Lake Charles, and the parish.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 17. Consideration of adopting resolutions for each of the following items as requested by the Human Service Department. A, approve the submission of a funding application to the Federal Transit Administration. B, approve the submission of a funding application to the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. C, approve the submission of a grant application for the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. We have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Foren. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 18. Consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for the following. A, requests for proposals for project management software. And B, bids for the Old Highway 90 boat ramp project. I have a motion by Mr. Senegal on all bullets and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Mr. Behrs.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I heard the great news from Mr. Dean Kelly. Folks out there in Vinton, Toomey area, they've been waiting on this boat launch repair for, since I took office. And four years, I guess. And they, they've had a heck of a time with, with Mother Nature setbacks. But I'm, I'm, this is awesome to see and I can't wait to share the news. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other discussion? Ms. Truman.
I want to say, good job, Mr. Behrs. When I represented that area many, many years ago, that's how long we've been working on it. That's a long time. I'm old.
Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number 19. Consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the Kakushu Emergency Response Training Center HVAC replacement project as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Appshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.